Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
If you will, please let us stand together as we salute and pledge to the American flag, which will be followed with a prayer from our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As Independence Day is celebrated in our communities, we praise you and we bless you, Lord God, for the birth, life, and continuing development of this great nation, the United States of America. Whenever and wherever in the cause of human events courage and commitment calls a people to take a stand on self-evident truths, we rejoice. Before you and in you, the Creator, all are created equal. Endowed by you, the Creator, with certain unalienable rights, we as a people accept as well certain responsibilities to protect and defend always for ourselves and for others life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. With a firm reliance as the protection of your divine providence, we renew our pledge today to serve this nation knowing full well that the power of this assembly is derived from the consent of the governed. In you we place our solemn trust now and forever. Amen.
Commissioners, each of you have the agenda before you. It was properly given in the proper time and published upon our website. There is one item, though, that I'd like to ask that we remove from the agenda tonight. That would be item number one. Are there any other deletions or additions to the agenda? Here none? Do I have a motion to?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the agenda with the deletion of number one. Any discussion on the motion? Here none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is the public hearing on the 160D ordinance updates. And at this time, Mr. County Attorney, do you have any opening statements you'd like to give before we go into public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in the attorney's report, shared a pretty thorough description of what is before the board this evening. Certainly, the public hearing time is for the public to share any thoughts. They may have, but in brief, 160D is a new chapter of the North Carolina general statutes. That is essentially the consolidation and modernization of all local land use statutes. This has in turn required all local governments to revise and update their land use ordinances, and that's what's before the board this evening. I will note that the intention of the amendments is really not to change the rules that we've had out there for years and years. It's just to comply with the new statute and to address administrative and non-substantive issues.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
移到
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand in public hearing. Vice Chair, do we have anyone signed up?
There's no one signed up to speak.
All right. We want to give anyone the opportunity that may be here this evening that did not have the opportunity to sign up, if you would like to speak to the Board of Commissioners. Here none, citizens desire to speak. We have a motion to go out of public hearing. Do I have a second?
Take it.
Any further discussion on the motion? Here none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're out of public hearing on the 160D ordinance. Next would be a public hearing on CARTS Fixed Route Services. And I'm going to ask if Ms. Kelly, if you just, there you are. Welcome. If you just give us a few statements before we open our public hearing.
Thank you. This public hearing is regards to an improved and extended fixed route that would replace our current loop. We made a presentation about six weeks ago in regards to this. The information has been up on our website, the Craven County website under the CARTS section, and there's also a direct link that someone could have used for Craven County, nc.gov/omnibus. It is still posted up there. We did extensive advertising for this, legal ad, word of mouth, advertising with community partners, that type of a thing, with the hope to make sure that anyone who wanted the opportunity to speak in regards to these proposed changes would have an opportunity to. And tonight, we're just asking for the public hearing. We are not asking for approval of the plan yet because we want to have ample time to take into consideration any comments, if there are any, tonight.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
移到
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have any citizens?
I'm the one who's signed up to speak.
All right. Are there any citizens in the room tonight that did not have the opportunity to sign up that would like to speak to the Board of Commissioners on this matter?
Make a motion to go out.
Have a motion to go out and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're out of public hearing on the CARTS Fixed Route Services. Thank you. Next, we have a hearing on the excise tax refund for Mrs. Ramona Roach. And at this time, I'm going to ask our county attorney, Mr. Eric Grady, do you want to make some opening comments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This came to us by way of our clerk to the board. It's essentially a written request from the person, Ms. Roach, that filed and recorded a deed and erroneously paid revenue stamps in an amount considerably above what was due under the statutes. The Machinery Act at 105-228.37 sets out the process by which the county can authorize a refund. The first step is the written request from the taxpayer, which we have in hand. The second step is to set the hearing, which we're about to have, and we've given the taxpayer notice. And then, you know, after the hearing, the board can decide whether to grant or deny the request. It is styled a hearing, but I don't expect to have witnesses and testimony and evidence. Perhaps the taxpayer would have some comments, but the board certainly is free to ask any questions of her that she may have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to open the hearing in accordance with this general statute? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We're now in hearing. Ms. Roach, you want to come to the podium? Welcome. Do you have any comments for the board about this overpayment?
Not really. More than what's in the letter, just a zero makes a big difference. It was a typo, actually. We purchased land for $34,900. We paid revenue stamps on $349,000.
Wow.
So, we're just requesting a difference.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any others that desire to speak in this hearing to the Board of Commissioners over this matter? Any staff? All right. Does any Commissioners have any questions during this hearing? No questions at this time? All right. Then, do I have a motion that we close this hearing?
移到
Move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We're back to the board. What's the desire of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we refund the amount of $628 to Ms. Roach.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to refund the $628. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. County Attorney, is anything you think more that we need to do? We've done what we need to?
No, sir. That's all that's required by the board. Ms. Roach does have to visit with the Register of Deeds and file some paperwork, but we'll communicate that offline should the vote go in her favor.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. We appreciate you being here and sorry about that error.
That's my good friend. Just a typo.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Next is a petition of citizens on agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have any?
We have none signed up.
Okay. We have no one signed up to speak tonight. Item six is the consent agenda. Commissioners, I would ask that A be pulled from the consent agenda. The remaining items there would be the tax releases and refunds, and then the recreation budget amendment. Are there any other items that the board desires to pull? Here none? Do I have a motion that we accept the?
移到
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda with the exception of pulling A. Any discussion on the motion? Here none? Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right. Commissioners, if I could discuss A with you, the minutes of the June 21, 2021 regular session. It was brought to my attention by staff in the last few days that there was an error found in the minutes of June 21. And during the review, they found that the budget ordinance for west of New Bern Fire District contained a typo incorrectly listing the tax rate as 0.3750 per $100 valuation. The actual tax rate used for the fire district's budget was 0.0375 per $100 valuation, which is the same tax rate that each of you approved during the budget work session. Staff recommends a motion to correct the minutes of the June 21, 2021 regular session to reflect the correct tax rate of .0375 per $100 valuation for west of New Bern Fire District. And after that, then, they will proceed with updating the appropriate page in the ordinance as well. And just for your information, that is found on page 14 of the minutes, and it is under the levy of taxes for fire/special service districts. All right. Are there any questions for staff on this, Commissioners? Here are no questions. Do I have a motion?
移到
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here are no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Under departmental matters tonight, we first have recreation budget amendments. Mr. Billy Wilks.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Let me just first say to you, thank you for having us the other day. You got a beautiful facility there, and your staff was very accommodating to us, and we're very proud of our recreation department.
Thank you. And we're very excited to be in the building, to be honest with you, and staff's proud of it as well. So, thank you all. Have two budget amendments for your consideration tonight. The first one is the Creekside Waterfront Dock Project. And just a quick recap on that project. In 2020, we applied for a grant, and the grant was to essentially redo the dock at Creekside. It's 20 years old. We're going to replace the boards. We're going to add railings for safety. We're going to add a walkway for inclusion, and we're going to provide fishing cutouts for folks to more easily access Bryce's Creek and fish. Those are the four main components of this project. So, in 2021, or towards the end of 2020, we found out that we did receive the grant. The county agreed to match the grant. So, it's $88,500 was the grant amount. $29,500 was the county match. Harold Bait Foundation chipped in $7,200 because the first amount of money changed just slightly because of wood cost and everything for a total of $125,200. We initially thought with the contractor that we'd be able to start and complete the project in the 2021 budget cycle. Unfortunately, as we found, things got delayed a little bit, and they are now looking at possibly an early to mid-August start for that project. It's about eight weeks is about how long it'll take the project once they start. So, in the midst of that, once we get to the end of a budget year, the money goes into fund balance, and then we hence have to come forward and request that you allow us to move that money into 2022 so we can do this dock project.
All right. Are there any questions from Mr. Wilks, from the Commissioners? Here none? Do I have a motion?
移到
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? And that is for a budget amendment in an amount of $125,000. Here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. And then, the recreation truck purchase.
Yes. And this is one, again, that we were fortunate enough to be allocated money to purchase a new truck for recreation. The amount of that's $29,300. It was in the 2021 budget. The truck was ordered in the early part of this year. Unfortunately, Ford Motor Company had several glitches in getting this done. There were some, kind of just kept pushing us back as far as timeframe. We are now told that a definite date is the first part of August for delivery, which we're waiting anxiously for that because our vehicle fleet is a little bit tired, you know. So, it's going to be nice to have that. But we do need to, again, that money goes into the general fund. We have to request that it be moved into 2022, and that's the request for tonight.
All right. Any questions? Here none? Do I have a motion?
移到
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in an amount of $29,300. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none? Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the facilities, the request for exemption of engineering services. Mr. Hodges. Good evening.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
During the work sessions for the fiscal year 2122 county budget, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to develop a project for board consideration to build a county-owned fueling station for county vehicles located on county-owned property. Board of Commissioners appropriated $50,000 in the Facilities Department budget to engage with an engineering firm to begin this process. To facilitate this project, staff is requesting the approval of the resolution shown in Attachment Number Eight, exempting this project from the formal request for qualification of the RFQ process. Along with the exemption, the board has requested to authorize staff to contract with the firm of Vaughn and Melton to provide engineering services for this project in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
All right. Questions for Mr. Hodges? Here none? Do I have a motion?
移
Move. Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? And that is to approve the resolution of exemption for engineering services. Here are no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. All right. Next would be the request to set a public hearing for Project Pittsburgh. Mr. Jeff Wood. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Commissioners. Project Pittsburgh is a local manufacturer who plans to invest $9 million in machining equipment in an existing facility, create over 30 jobs in five years. The owners have asked what assistance the local community can provide in this investment. A $9 million investment will yield an estimated $50,400 in taxes per year. Due to the investment in job creation, the Economic Development Department recommends the county assist in this investment by providing a $25,000 grant to be utilized to assist Project Pittsburgh in the conversion of warehouse space in their facility to manufacturing space. Pursuant to NCGS 158-7.1, the Economic Development Department requests that the Craven County Board of Commissioners hold a public hearing on these matters at 8:30 a.m. or soon thereafter on Monday, July 19, 2021, in the Commissioners' Room in the Craven County Administration Building. All interested parties are invited to attend and present their views.
All right. First, do I have any questions for Mr. Woods, from the Board of Commissioners? Here none? Do I have a motion?
移到
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion to set the public hearing for Monday, July 19, at 8:30 a.m. I do have one question, Jack, County Attorney. We usually do not have public hearings during the morning just because it's during the workday, but this is of time, is of essence here. My question is, could we allow written comments to come as we have at other public hearings?
Talking to the manufacturers today, if it's something where we would like to wait and have a public hearing, the following one, we could probably look at that as well, Jack.
Well, I'm not trying to advocate not to go ahead and have it. I just think, you know, sometimes, you know, it's just a little bit unusual for us to have it in the mornings, but if we could allow for written comments, I think that would take care of it.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I think you could. We would need to specify that in the notice and perhaps have in the website and have Nan's email address. And usually, you would see a time before the hearing that's the cutoff. You don't want somebody, you know, emailing at 6:00 in the morning or whatever, but we could certainly accommodate that if it's the board's desire.
Board, what do you want to do?
The next one would be August 2, Jeff. I think that still works within their timeframe. If you guys would prefer to wait for an evening meeting, that would be fine. As a matter of fact, that might give a chance for some other partners or economic development partners to step up if possible. That would be fine.
Your call.
Your call. We'll do what you want to.
We can wait for the next evening. August 2.
All right. So, the motion and a second. Are y'all willing to do it for August?
As amended.
Okay. As amended. All right. Here are no objections for anyone? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you're doing. All right. Next is finance. We have several additional budget amendments this evening. Mr. Greg Warren, good evening.
Good evening. I have two items on the agenda for your consideration tonight, two budget amendments. The first one is for the FY 2122 appropriation for Vanceboro Rescue Squad. During staff's review of the Rescue Squad's annual appropriation letters for FY 22, it was discovered that Vanceboro's Rescue Squad's appropriation was funded at $325,000 instead of the $350,000 that was approved by Commissioners at the May 19, 2021 budget work session. In order to correct this submission, a budget amendment shown as Attachment Number 10A agenda packets in the amount of $25,000 is deeded from fund balance.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Warren before we vote? Here are no questions. Do I have a motion?
移到
I have a motion and I have a second. I have a second for Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Any further discussion? And this is a budget amendment in the amount of $25,000. Here are no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second budget amendment tonight is for the Hurricane Florence Disaster Assistance Funds. As part of the county's disaster assistance grant application that we had filed for Hurricane Florence, the county opened its grant application up to include any storm-related expenses that were incurred by our volunteer fire and rescue squads. Several of the county's fire and rescue districts participated, submitting invoices totaling $73,799 for their assistance during the hurricane. In March of 2021, the county received notification from FEMA that $491,365 in disaster assistance funds were awarded for the county's emergency response. In June of 2021, the county received the federal portion, which is 75%, and that amount was $368,524. And we are currently working on the remaining 25% that will be aid when we finalize the project with the state. In order to distribute these funds to our fire and rescue partners, a budget amendment from fund balance in the amount of $73,799 is needed.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Warren? Commissioner Liner?
Okay. $73,799 is the 100% total of what they asked for.
Sir.
What I'm getting at, we only got 75%. So, we're not paying them 75%, and then they're going to expect another 25% when we get the state funding. We're paying them total, we're paying them off.
Yes, sir. This would be 100% of what they submitted to us, and we receive reimbursement.
Thank you.
All right. Additional questions? Here none? Do I have a motion?
移到
Move.
I have a motion and a second. And that is for a budget amendment in the amount of $73,799. Here are no further discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Chris.
All right. Commissioners, next we have our appointments. First, we have pending appointments. Are there any of these committees, boards, that any Commissioner has nomination for? Commissioner Liner?
Sir, Recreation Advisory Committee, mine. This is the one, it was just passed out. It should have been in the package. I guess it came in late on that. But Mr. Ben, I'm not going to try to pronounce that last name, is nominating to fill that seat that was allocated by an individual moving out of the area.
Okay.
Seat, right?
What's that?
That's the seat, right?
Right.
All right, you have, that is number seven there. You have a nomination for Mr. Ben. Are there any additional nominations? Here none. We will accept this gentleman by acclamation. All right, thank you, Commissioner Liner. Are there any others tonight, far as pending? All right, here none. We will move to current. First, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. You have first, Mrs. Deborah Walker, who is the Social Services appointee. And you have Christopher D. Devon. And this is an applicant to fill Mr. Keter's vacant seat. And I'm taking that this last one here, you have no, the term is ending, leaving a vacancy, but we have no nomination for that. All right, so with the first two seats, do I have any nominations?
I recommend we appoint both of them.
Okay, got a nomination for both of these individuals. Are there any additional nominations from the Board? Here none. They will be accepted by acclamation. Okay. Next would be the Craven County Recreation Advisory Council for District Two. I would ask that we would defer that one tonight, if it's all right with the Board once again.
Because this was printed after I found out, but this lady no longer wishes to serve, so currently there's a vacancy.
And I have reached out to several folks about that.
Okay.
All right, next would be the TDA. You have, I can't pronounce his last name.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Commissioner Mark after the last meeting, actually last week. He would support, would have, if he was here tonight, recommend Perez Pankavala to continue his service on the TDA.
Okay, all right. Do we have any nomination then, from the Board?
For him or another one?
Whoever.
I'll make the nomination.
For him?
Yep.
Okay, we do have this nomination. Are there any additionals? Here none. He will be accepted by acclamation then. All right, then next is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the designation of the Voting Delegate for the 114th Annual Conference. This will start at 12:45 p.m. on Saturday. Nan, of those Commissioners that have signed up, who do we have that is staying for the remainder for Saturday evening?
No one currently has reservations for Saturday evening, but Mr. McCabe has indicated he wants to, so that everybody else would be, you know, at noonish on Saturday is when the session's end.
The session ends?
Around midday on noon.
Midday. All right, so Commissioner McCabe is saying he's going to stay. Would the Board be willing to nominate Commissioner McCabe to be our delegate for that?
So moved.
All right, we have that nomination. Are there any others? Here none. Commissioner McCabe will serve as our delegate. And as far as our alternate, they do ask and request that we have an alternate. And I will, unless somebody else wants to do it, I will do it. Is somebody else planning to stay? All right, here none. We all agree to me serving as alternate?
So moved.
Okay. Hearing any other nominations? All right, I will do that. All right, you see the upcoming terms expiring in August. You have the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees and the EMS Advisory Council. Any other appointments to bring before the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a, for bringing up for that, but we got two votes for the NACO conference next week. Are we going to have anybody call in or vote or give our proxies to somebody?
Is he on the same date?
Huh?
This is NACO.
This is NACO.
This is the state.
It's the end of this, you're right.
Next week.
It's this weekend and Monday.
It's the what conference?
This week. It's the national. It's in Maryland. I don't believe any Commissioners attending, so you would, if someone were to call in, they would have, you would have to appoint a designate.
Is it too late to register?
I think to register, but I think our votes.
Well, I think you have to be registered to vote.
And it would be a late fee.
Okay.
Does anybody want to do that?
No, not if we got to pay a late fee.
Okay, all right. All right, here none?
We get that one.
All right, next would be the County Attorney's Report. Mr. Grady. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, good evening. I have several items for your consideration this morning, or this afternoon, I'm sorry. The first several deal with county-owned real estate acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The first item is 2036 Caracara Drive, I believe out in Fairfield Harbor, with the parcel ID number of 2050337. This is on for final approval after the upset bid process. The one bid that we received was $4,000. Basically, the cost of foreclosure and the past due taxes were $3,852.43. Tax value of the property is $5,080. We do recommend that the Board give final approval to this bid.
All right, what's the desire of the Board?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? And this is the conveyance of parcel number 2-050-337. Any further discussion? Here none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. The second item is an initial offer on 597 Highway 55 West with parcel ID number of 8218068. The offer amount is $3,375. The past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were originally $4,581.10. Tax value of the property is $6,750. This is a parcel that we own jointly with the city of New Bern. And as is customary, we allow the municipality to act first, and they have approved the initial offer. If the Board is inclined to do likewise, it'll be put out for upset bids, and we'll come back for our final approval at a later date.
All right, what's the desire?
So moved.
Move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? And it is a resolution approving the transaction and authorizing upset bid on parcel number 8-218-068. Any further discussion? Here none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
The third item and the last parcel of real estate for your consideration this evening is another initial offer to purchase. The property address is 125 Hillmont Road with the parcel ID number of 8219007. As with the last one, this one is owned by the county with the city of New Bern, which has already approved the initial offer. That's in the amount of $7,500. The past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were originally $6,349.65. And the property has a tax value of $15,000. If the Board approves this, it'll be sent out for upset bids, and you'll have a shot at final approval at a later date.
All right, what's the desire?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? This is the adopted resolution approving the transaction and authorizing upset bid on parcel number 8-219-007. Here no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the fourth item is for consideration and hopefully approval, and that's the adoption of amended and restated land use ordinances for the county. This is in light of the 160D chapter of the general statutes that had a public hearing on earlier, and I gave a brief summary. There's a write-up in the agenda packet. I know the couple hundred pages have been amply circulated for everybody's pleasure reading. I would be glad to answer any questions, or I do so. I do want to express my personal appreciation to Don and his staff, Jason. They were wonderful in this process. You guys have a very good department out there, and they handle stuff like this very well for you. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Mr. Attorney, and maybe Don is the person to answer this, I don't know. I started reading it, and I fell asleep. Not really. It's interesting, the detail that we go to with descriptions, with definitions. It's amazing. I had, you know, I guess I wasn't shocked, but I really didn't realize that we would go to the depths, the lengths that we have to go to. It's 184 pages. And my question is just a simple one, and that is, is there anything new? Or is it basically just refining and restating what we had in the past?
That is correct. There was a few things on some certificates that we had to change that had not been changed from previous occurrences of changes that have taken place. And we did that purely to make the document more legally sufficient in the event that we would have to go to courts to have some type of settlement in the arbitration ordinance itself. Basically, we already had all those ordinances in place, and we just went through the process of trying to put them in the format of Chapter 160D that the state of North Carolina passed, so that when developers go from community to community, there'll be a commonality amongst those ordinances that will assist them in doing work in multiple locations to have the same wording, the same interpretation, the same language.
Ben, thank you. That's what I assumed, but I just wanted, for clarification for people out at home and maybe watching, it's got a lot of important detail in it. I understand that. It assures that we do things in a fair and orderly manner. That would be my simple description of it, so that everybody's treated the same and to be no, there's not a lot of room for, wow, I didn't, we forgot something. I don't think we forgot anything, so, we, whoever wrote that, anyway. So, a good job. I think it's well-written and easily to understand and obviously necessary in the world we live in, so, thank you.
All right, other questions from the Board? Don, Jason, I would ask, have y'all had any of our citizens that have addressed concerns in any way to you about this? Nothing?
Not in our chamber meetings, there is no concern brought up, but our chamber members were very involved in this as well. They thoroughly swirled through that and had all kinds of suggestions, recommendations, not filled with errors, so putting that on the comment list.
Okay. All right, County Manager, do you feel comfortable?
I'm just excited to be at this point. I can remember a year and a half ago, we were wondering how to get started, Commissioner Booker, on that 186 pages, but I think we had a great team. And as Ari said, we got a great staff, and they've done a fantastic job with it, so, good to be here.
All right, Mr. County Attorney, you're asking tonight if the Board feels comfortable to adopt this resolution, to adopt the changes?
Yes, sir, and the resolution would adopt the restated and amended ordinances. Being a lawyer, I had to say it's going to be effective at 12:01 a.m. tonight/tomorrow morning. And that's what I would recommend the Board do. Of course, you can certainly refer action until a later date if there's any discomfort or questions that need to be asked.
All right, what's the desire of the Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? And I just state this for the record once more, and this is what we have to go on as the Board of Commissioners and with the advice that we've been given that, and I'm reading this from what we've been, we've given here, that these updates are not intended to change any substantive requirements of the ordinances. They're just going by what the state of North Carolina has set forth for policy or legislation for us to do, so. All right, any further discussion? Here none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate all the work you and your firm did to help us. All right, next would be the petition of citizens on general topics. Mr. Vice Chair?
We have nobody signed up.
All right, nobody signed up, petition of citizens. We will go to next, the County Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman, just to be brief, the new fiscal year has kicked off. We're ready to rock and roll. We're excited to be inside a new fiscal year and looking forward to, as you saw, a series of projects, which you'll get more on in the following work session that Mr. Jean's working on that were part of the budget. So, excited to be making progress.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the County Manager from the Board of Commissioners? All right, here none. We'll go to Commissioners' Reports. Commissioner McCabe, we'll start with you this evening.
Chair, I don't have a comment at this time.
All right, Commissioner Mitchell?
I'd just like to thank all the municipalities and all the citizens who participated in celebrating our glorious Fourth.
Thank you. Commissioner Liner?
Sir, the only thing I got, and I didn't bring the date with me, maybe. Commissioner ET knows, Havelock Chamber is putting on a salute to vets in August. And I've got the flyer. I'll send it out to everybody before we leave here. Oh, August 10th, salute to vets. Tickets and tables are all on sale at the Chamber. You need to just reach out to the Chamber.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other items?
No, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I do have something tonight. I received an email through my county email last week, followed by a phone call from Mr. Tyler Day. And he's holding a redistricting workshop in New Bern on Thursday, July 16 at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. And this workshop is to make sure that the communities have a good understanding of the importance of advocating for accurate redistricting. And this is referring to redistrict, not the local redistricting, but the congressional and the legislative redistricting. And this workshop, again, is going to be Thursday via June, and you can get in contact with Mr. Day through Common Cause, Common Cause, North Carolina. Again, the workshop is on Thursday via Zoom at 6:00 p.m.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, we appreciate it. Vice Chair?
My only comment would be that after our last meeting, the Board moved over to the hotel, the Doubletree, and had a tour. And I think the relevant part about this tour was, our convention center relies on hotel space. And I was pleased to see the work that was done. I know that hotel was badly damaged in the storm, and I think they did a very nice job of getting that hotel back up to speed so that it would be something we'd be proud of for our guests to come into our county to stay. And the manager there, who, the lady that showed us around, indicated that they're really seeing high occupancy, from 80 to 100%. And weekends, and when there's events, they're at 100%. And most of the time, they're at least at 80%, which is really encouraging. So, we're getting a lot of people coming back to our city and our county and spending money here. This past weekend, it was amazing, the amount of people that were on the streets downtown. It was truly a busy, busy time, so I'm just excited about the fact that it appears that we're back to some kind of normal as far as our activities and tourism. Restaurants are busy, just positive signs, so that's my only comment.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, anything else tonight from any of our Board members to bring before the Board of Commissioners? Staff, you have anything?
Happy birthday, Jean.
Yep.
Happy birthday.
That is Mr. Jean Hodges, our Assistant County Manager.
Oh, okay.
Next year will be a great milestone. We won't tell his age, but next year will be a great milestone. But for those of you that may be listening tonight or in attendance, Mr. Hodges has been a great asset to Craven County government. He lives in rural Craven County, so I champion him on. He's one of mine. And he was born and raised in Beaufort County, so a good old fella, and exactly what we need here in county government. And so, Jean, we thank a lot of you, buddy, and wish you a great birthday. All right, having nothing else to bring before the Board tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a second. I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.